Call to order for Watertown City Council meeting for October 21st of 2024. Please rise while Sarah McManus of the First United Methodist Church of Watertown leads us in prayer.
We all pray with me. Heavenly God, we thank you for a community to gather in, a community across space, a community across time. We thank you for a place to live, to thrive, and to join together. We ask your presence amongst those who are here tonight and those who are missing, that we may feel your presence, that we may know all there is to know in you, and that we may share in your justice and your love with all. In your precious name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Assistant Finance Officer Strickards, would you please call the roll? Here.
Bueller. Danforth.
[laughing].
Here.
Jurens. Peters.
Here.
Shuddy.
Here.
Quorum is established. Would like to note that Councilman Danforth and Councilman Jurens are both proved to have given their notice that they just can't make it tonight, so we will make do with the ones that are here. So with that, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Motion made by Councilman Tupper. Second by Councilman Bueller. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the agenda. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Now is the time for open forum. If there's anyone here who would like to address the council on something that is not on tonight's agenda, now is your time to do so. At open forum? So are you talking as a citizen then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or this is the open, right?
Well, council has a moment at the end.
Yes, right, right. Yeah, well, we want to do this up front, so.
Yes.
As a citizen, citizen of Watertown, South Dakota, Bruce Bueller. No, I'd like to, I'd like to introduce some folks that have worked with our pickleball development, and we've got the Watertown Pickleball Association, which they started, and have been very diligently working with that group, and organizing, and setting up memberships, and we've also, obviously, we're in the process of building the new facility, and we're near completion with that. And on top of that, there was a lot of effort put into raising funds to, to apply to that facility, and so I'd like to introduce a few folks. First off, Gillette Posier, who is the president, I believe, is that the title, or queen? President of the Watertown Pickleball Association, Paullette Cotton, I think she's the vice president, and, oh, secretary, and Don Meyer, I don't know why he, how he even got in with the metal detector, I don't know, but, no, anyway, I'd like to welcome them, and they'd like to make a little presentation. So if you want to step up to the microphone and turn it on, and we'll go from there.
So we'll go to point 8A, which is the pickleball presentation, so.
And by the way, now I'm back as a council.
All right. All right. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for allowing us to come. Watertown Pickleball Association would like to present to the city of Watertown a check for our portion of the funding for the pickleball courts. We're excited, they're almost finished, we hope to be playing on them by next week, Monday.
And just to point out for the public that this is, the club stepped up to the plate very early on and said that they would help raise the funds, and that's what really kickstarted the project and got it done, really in what could be considered record time for local government, so, and they do look fabulous, so. Park and Rec Director Rodick, would you like to come and join us for a presentation?
I want to add one quick thing.
Yes.
When you get to be my age, you're working on your bucket list. This is the biggest check I've ever handled in my bucket list.
Counsel.
I'd like to present to Dusty on behalf of, as his representative of the city, a check for $264,173.
Wow, so we're gonna. Counsel, counsel and coach, if, Don, if you want to come forward, we'll do it right up here, or by the presentation, if you want to come.
Bruce, you want to come on over?
Yeah.
Come on, Bueller.
All right. Can't stand by.
Go ahead.
I'll take that picture.
I know, Don's shy.
We're gonna take pictures, I'll guarantee it, so.
I don't know what camera I'm supposed to be.
You better be pasted on our Facebook page.
Give it to Dusty.
Well, thank you.
Way to go, you guys.
Thank you.
Way to go.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
All right, thank you very much. We'll go on to item 9A, an approval of a change order for the 2024 asphalt milling and overlay in large patches project 2402 with Dunick Incorporated for a decrease of roughly $331,000. We go to our city manager, Amanda Mack.
Thank you, Mayor. Our Public Works Director and our city engineer are both out tonight, so I'm going to play an engineer on TV. Hopefully, I don't mess it up too badly, but this is a pretty easy action item for you all. It is a final change order for the mill and overlay annual project for a decrease of 331,000. The reason that it is such a large decrease is we actually shifted the work that needed to be done. The original plan was to do work in conjunction with a municipal utility project that had been delayed, so a different neighborhood was selected. In this case, it was the Derby Downs neighborhood that was completed, which had significantly less areas that needed full depth milling. On the agenda cover sheet, you can see all of the areas that were covered, and again, this is a deduct of almost 331,000, so bringing the total contract price to just a little over 2.24 million.
Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the change order. Motion made by Councilman Shuddy, seconded by Councilman Bueller. Let's open it up for conversation. Councilman Tupper.
Let's see, city engineer, public works director, city manager, Amanda Mack. How's that fit?
And a pretty good cook.
And a pretty good cook, Bruce says so. So will this work be moved forward into a project for next year, or?
I can't speak if it's this exact project that's, that's planned for, for next year, but it obviously is on the radar. It makes sense to do it in conjunction with utilities if, if they're already going to be digging in there, so I would assume that whenever they're able to move forward, we would try to figure out how to work at the same time.
Okay, that kind of answers my question, thank you.
Thank you. Any further conversation? All right, hearing none, the motion is to approve the change order. All those in favor will say aye, opposed say nay. Assistant Finance Director Strickards, please call the roll.
Tupper.
Aye.
Bueller.
Aye.
Hollein.
Aye.
Peters.
Aye.
Shuddy.
Aye.
Motion carries. 9B is an approval of another change order for a final 2023 PMPC neighborhood reconstruction project with Dunick Incorporated for a decrease of roughly $255,000 for a new contract price of 160, 100, or $1,671,000. Thank you. City manager Mack.
Thank you, Mayor. This deduct is related to the 16th Avenue Northwest portion of the 2023 street reconstruction project. You may recall that we have been working pretty diligently with the landowners on that north portion of 16th Avenue to procure the appropriate right-of-way necessary to do the construction. We've not been able to come to a resolution on that, and so it was mutually agreed upon between ourselves and the contractor to remove that part from the project, to close it out. All of the other work was completed in, in 2023. I will stand by for any questions that I might be able to answer.
Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the change order. Motion made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Bueller. Open it up for conversation, questions, council? Councilman Tupper?
Just a quick question for city manager Mack. Is this money planned on moving forward into the street budget for next year for a different project possibly?
So these dollars will go back into the unrestricted cash, and then are part of what we carry over annually into the 212 fund.
Thank you.
For these, for the specific project, no, not until we can figure out the right-of-way situation.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the change order. All those in favor will say aye, opposed say nay. Assistant Director Strickards?
Tupper.
Aye.
Bueller. Hollein.
Aye.
Peters.
Aye.
Shuddy.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 10A is a first reading of an ordinance amending the zoning map of the city of Watertown for a portion of property in the Watertown Development Edition from I-1 Light Industrial to C-3 Highway Commercial, and this is located at 1425 Ninth Avenue Southwest. City manager Mack.
I will defer to Community Development Manager Han.
Community, manager Han.
Thank you, manager Mack and Mayor Hollein. So this, and I don't know if we have it pulled up here, so I can show you guys the exhibit, but it's a very straightforward rezone request, and it's the first reading, so it's for the portion of property of the Watertown Development Company addition, which you guys would identify as Crestones former building. So when we're looking at, or at this property, it does have split zoning, so it's more so just to be able to have one zoning designation over the entirety of the lot, and then for a replat to be approved. It does meet all the other minimum requirements for the C-3 district. So currently, this small portion is zoned I-1 Light Industrial, and that was actually because of a vacated right-of-way previously for having that split zoning, and then the rest of the lot will be, or is zoned C-3 Highway Commercial, so then this portion will, will go and be a part of this one lot.
All right. Thank you very much. It's the first reading, so there's no motion necessary. We'll open it up for questions or conversation, council? Seems pretty straightforward. Councilman Peters, anything?
I'm good, thanks, Mayor.
All right. Hearing no further comments, we'll just move on to item 12A, an approval of a resolution number 24-28, the plat of Crocker First Edition to the municipality of Watertown in the county of Cottington, South Dakota, and authorize the city manager to enter into a private road agreement. Said city manager will now tell us more.
Said city manager will defer to Community Development Manager Han.
All right, thank you, manager Mack. So this, and again, this is a straightforward plat. The reason why it's before you for approval and not administratively approved is because of that private street agreement that will be for the future installation of a street if that lot to the west is ever developed. Currently, it is vacant, so we cannot plat a lot that creates a landlocked situation. And I was seeing if I had the vicinity map up here. There, so this was triggered because of a building permit request for the Crockers Collision Center, and then the need for the replat because it was a combination of multiple legal descriptions. So when somebody comes in for a building permit, we do have them replat to clean up legal descriptions on a property, and make sure it's all conforming to minimum lot size requirements. So the rezone was approved in September of this year, and that was, again, there's a small portion that was zoned I-1, now it's all C-3, and then the agreement is just because of that west lot to allow access to Highway 20 if it ever were to be developed, and those stipulations are outlined in that private road agreement attached.
Thank you. Chair would like to entertain a motion to approve the resolution. Motion made by Councilman Bueller. Seconded by Councilman Shuddy. Open it up for questions or conversation. Councilman Shuddy?
Thank you, Mayor. So yeah, just to, just to help me understand, or even the public, it's going to be a private road that's going to go through there, but yet that lot could be sold off, it'll just be, who maintains that road if it's sold, and which, the property owner of the current lot that the road's going through, or the city, or how does that work?
Yeah, so any private road is privately maintained, the city does not. If, now how it's written in the agreement, the owner of lot one would be responsible to install that private street, which most likely would be a part of their parking lot anyway, but it goes along with orderly development, where any developer has to extend a public street to the extent of their lot so that the next person can connect to it. So in this case, like, all of these lots, you know, have existed in this manner of being landlocked, so this is an opportunity then to provide an access easement if in the future the lot to the west, who is in the same, it's in the same family, but in the case that that would sell to a, a different party, that there would be access available, and then that's all spelled out in the agreement language.
Follow-up?
So then, and it would never become a public, it wouldn't get widened or made a public street, it'll always be the lot ones, at least with the current contract, to maintain that, no matter who owns the lot in the back?
Yep, and unless they came back in the future and replatted it as a public right-of-way, and then improved it to city street standards, the only way I could see that happening is if they were going to subdivide it further, because you can see with the size of this lot, there would be opportunity on the south and the north to be separate lots, and probably even, so you need 20,000 square feet in the C-3 district, and there's 105, so in theory, they could, they could subdivide this five ways with the existing square footage, but that's really the only, but that could be a possibility for the future, but it would have to come back to council to approve. And again, that the, the private developer or owner would have to improve the future right-of-way to city standards before we would accept it.
Any further questions or comments? Councilman Tucker, Tupper, sorry.
That's okay. Public, er, not Public Works, excuse me, Ms. Han. So basically, this is only assuring somebody isn't landlocked in the back end, they don't have to build a road until something were to happen, and if they were to sell those lots off to somebody else, they would have to build and maintain a road at that time, or build a road, excuse me.
Yeah, so it would, at this time, as long as there's not a building permit request for the property to the west, then it can remain as is. So there's a parking lot there today that they use, you know, for maneuvering vehicles and, and whatnot, because they have a shop on the north and the south side of where the street runs. So, yeah, if, if it were, if the property to the west requested a building permit, then we would make sure that it meets our private road standards, which, like I said, it's already paved, so most likely, there would not be much improvement to do, but yeah, that would come at that time.
Basically, an easement is what it is, so.
Yeah, yep.
Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the resolution. All those in favor will say aye, opposed say nay. Director Strickards, please find out how we vote.
Aye.
Bueller. Hollein.
Aye.
Peters.
Aye.
Shuddy.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 12B is an approval of the 2025 employee benefits, benefit agreements and authorization for the city manager to execute all necessary documents. City manager Mack.
Thank you, Mayor. This is our annual renewal of health-related benefits for the employees for the city of Watertown. As we mentioned during the budget hearing, we were planning for a 7% increase in health insurance premiums. It's pretty straightforward from there. We contribute 95% of a single plan and 75% of a family plan. We offer dental and vision, but we do not pay any of those premiums, those are solely on the employee. Michelle is here, I thought I saw Darcy in the back. If you have any questions, I or someone from HR would be happy to try and answer them.
Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the agreements and the authorization. Motion made by Councilman Shuddy, seconded by Councilman Bueller. Any conversation on this council? All right, we'll close the conversation, go to the vote. Assistant Director Strickards, please call the roll.
Tupper.
Aye.
Bueller. Hollein.
Aye.
Peters.
Aye.
Shuddy.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item 13 is city council member announcements and introduction of topics for future discussion. Council, anything to discuss tonight? Let's go to city managers' report. City manager, do you have anything?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one reminder, so our next council meeting will not be until November 4th, so it's a couple of weeks away now, but at 4:00 PM on the 4th, there'll be, there will be a joint council and planning commission meeting in the Police Department Community Room to receive an update on the commercial late zoning committee's work. We'll send out a formal agenda for that as it gets closer. That's all I have, Mayor.
Very well, thank you. There's no reason to go into.
Mayor?
Yep, Councilman Peters?
I'm sorry, I couldn't get my mute up fast enough, but I do have just a question here. I was approached by somebody in the community, I think it was this past weekend, and they nudged me and asked how the, the daycare fund was going, and so I'd be remiss if I didn't pose the question publicly just to get an update on how that's going and, and what we can do as a council to have pushed that forward.
Thank you, Councilman. City manager Mack, do you want to take that? I know I can take that as well, but.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Councilman Peters, I know I've been in conversation with Sister Barb Younger out at the Mother of God Monastery, and I know that they have continued to receive some private donations for what will become our Little Village daycare out there, which is the transitioning of little blessings to that location. I do not know the timeline on that yet. They are still waiting to hear back from some possible matching funds from the government. I do know that they also received a grant from a federal agency, I think it was Homeland Security, and so they have been continuing to raise a lot of funds to move forward with that project. In regard to the city revolving loan fund, I know city manager Mack and I have had conversations about how to implement that. We know that we can put the money into the community foundation, they have offered to help us out as far as like having a location where it can be kept, secure, and then also all the appropriate documentation can be handled through them. We have also, city manager Mack could probably talk to any conversations that have been going on with Watertown Development Company in regards to that, but I know that that is still a work in progress, but progress nonetheless, it still is, so we are still moving forward with that. City manager Mack, did you have anything?
No, sir.
Councilman Peters, anything on that?
No, no, I don't think so. I think, you know, I would just stress the importance of, of figuring out a solution at, at some point, just so.
We don't have an anticipated move-in date. We do know, according to the contract, they're scheduled to be done the first week of May. We, I've been over there a handful of times, it's coming along nicely. We've not been made aware of any delays or potential delays. Been told that if they were going to find anything that would cause some challenges, they probably would have found it by now. They're working hard to get the outside exterior stuff buttoned up before snow flies so that they can work inside all winter.
Councilman Peters, anything?
Awesome.
Yep. Councilman Tupper, you had something?
That's it, thank you.
Councilman Bueller?
Thank you. Perhaps city manager, Mack, would like to just reiterate what we're using the garages for.
Well, I, never mind, I was gonna make some smart alec comment.
Do you want me to do it?
No, they will be used for city vehicles, storage for city vehicles, as well as equipment that is utilized by city staff, surveying equipment, things for inspections on construction projects, et cetera.
Yeah, just to make it clear, this is for city vehicles, it's not for employee vehicles.
Correct.
These are vehicles that the city uses on and off throughout the day.
Mm-hmm.
And no elected official vehicles.
Yep.
I want to make that very clear. And just real quick, I know that the Army Corps of Engineers is still soliciting feedback from the public, so if anyone has any, any input in regards to the core proposal in regard to flood mitigation in the city, you are welcome to contact the Corps of Engineers on that. All right, anything else? We have no reason, what's that? County Commission got one done in 17 minutes not long ago, so. We have no reason to go into executive session, therefore, chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Councilman Bueller, second by Councilman Tupper. Any conversation on that? Hearing none, the motion is to adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay? Motion carries.